All right, we're gonna get started. Welcome to Spokane City Council briefing session for today. Ms. Fister, could you please call the roll?
Council President Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Lepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and we did have scheduled an interview with Eric Robison from, for the CHHS Board, but I'm not seeing him up there. Jacoby, if you could keep an eye on him, and if he shows up, we'll interview him. He's a great person, works for City of Spokane Valley in their homelessness, helped quite a bit with Commerce Proposal. All right. We don't have a meeting next week, so there's no briefing for that, but there's a lot going on for tonight's agenda, so let me look at that. So, the first thing I wanted to do is that we need, we found out today from City Legal and the Clerk's Office, that because we put a measure on the ballot that the voters could vote on, a charter amendment on whether or not to have a more independent city attorney's office, we need to establish a pro and con committee to do that. We have the cons figured out. Councilmember Bingle has organized that. We don't have all the pros yet, but the first thing we have to do is put that, agree to put that on the agenda. We'll probably have to amend it by 6:00 when we have a few more names. And Hannah Lee circulated that in a, in a package of things. So, the first I'm looking at, someone's willing to bring a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adjusting tonight's agenda.
So moved, suspend the rules.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add the resolution on pro and con committees for creating a statement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's added to the agenda. There was a request to amend some language in the CHHS contract language that was circulated. I don't know if people saw that. Anyone's here from CHHS to tell us? Oh, Jen, welcome to our meeting, if you'd like to just tell us what's going on. Are you there, Jen? All right. Well, let's...
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, great, thank you, sorry about that. So, a couple of weeks ago, we, we sent the amendment that you have through council for approval. The total dollar amount that we requested approval on has stayed the same, but we found an error in the addition of the total award, and we've made that adjustment, but unfortunately, we could not push that through the Clerk's Office without coming back through council. So, I did provide a copy of the original approved language and then the change, so I'm, I'm here for any questions that you might have.
And Terry, so, do we need to re-vote on that as a contract, essentially?
Right, as a corrected contract.
Okay, so, we're adding that to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to add the corrected contract to tonight's agenda?
So moved to add.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, or opposed nay? Abstentions? All right, that is added. And then, the other issue is, we have an SBO that would authorize purchase of police vehicles, and regardless of whether it's the straight-up SBO for that, or an amendment to the ARPA SBO, the Police Department still needs something that would allows them to put in their orders. And that's essentially on our, it would be in addition to our consent agenda?
Both. Well, you've already got it on your agenda as a special budget ordinance, so we need to add it to as a consent item for the actual purchase.
Okay. So, at this point, I'm just looking for a motion to add the authorization to make purchase orders of police vehicles to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's added. And then, next is, well, since we're just on the consent agenda, there's a request to add Item 8, Contract Extension with Government Jobs Doing Businesses, NeoGov. Is there a motion to add that?
So moved to add. Second.
Is there anyone here who wants to brief us on that? Come on down, Mr. Sloan.
Good afternoon, City Council. Council President, this item is, I appreciate the fact that you've accepted this motion to request this suspension of the rules. What has happened is, City, we're assisting HR and working with the Budget Director to set this up so that we can transition from Skillsoft. It's our current training provider. They've, through research, we found that NeoGov provides a more extensive solution pack for city, citywide training, and we needed to get this approved through and approved in time for us to set it up before Skillsoft ends. That contract ends in October, so that's why we're trying to, that's why we are requesting some expedition on this approval. That way, we can have, the vendor requires about 40 days to get this set up, so that we have no gap in, in training resources for all new employees and current employees. There's the background.
Any questions? All right.
Okay, thank you.
It's been moved and approved to add that. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, Item 8 is added. You go to page 9. There is an SBO to add $3.128 million for police vehicles out of general fund and allocated reserves. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's added. And then, on that same page, Ordinance C36250, Decrease Appropriation for Director of Human Resources Position by $31,000 and Add, or, and Decrease Labor Relations Manager, and then Increase Appropriation by $61,000. Okay. That's just paying for the NeoGov, right? Okay, got it. Is there a motion to add that?
So moved.
Mr. Council?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? That's added. I'm gonna go back to earlier pages, but before I do that, there was a request to substitute a version on the MFTE. We had a presentation from Terry about that.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page 10.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay, that's substituted. All right, now I'm going back...
But, wait, we're still on page, oh, page 10, on the emergency ordinance? Would you want to defer that?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I had a request to defer the emergency ordinance also on page 10.
Yeah.
For, I think it was, three weeks.
Yeah.
And the reason for it is, again, public works. Now, we've heard, actually from the Public Works Division Attorney with ideas, and wanting to distinguish between, you know, water towers and big pump stations versus just an individual pipe going into a house, and they wanted to come up with some language on that, so. So, anyway, is there a motion to defer that until August 22nd?
So, is this ordinance 36239?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
So, did you so move? Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? We're rewriting the whole agenda? That's, that's all right. Okay, let's see. Now, I'm back on page 7. Ordinance C36234, on improvements to the Police Academy facility. Still, we got an initial, well, we haven't gotten the report on the overtime hours and wanted to include those, and there's been some discussion about getting money for the state from this as well, but I had a request to defer this.
So moved, defer for three weeks.
And that's 36234.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Could, Mr. Lepone, could you tell us your conversation?
Yeah. Councilmember Wilkerson and I went out there today and looked at the carpet, and it definitely needs to be replaced. There's no doubt about that. So, then, part of wanting to defer and wait, I think there'd be a great opportunity to talk to the state about helping to pay for more facility improvements than just the carpet, too. So, I had a quick conversation with Representative Richelli about making a capital request next year. They have other needs and a bigger package that we could potentially look at, expanding classrooms and stuff like that. So, we just need more time to kind of talk about that and see if we can advocate for more improvements out there than just those carpets.
Actually, they said, they wanted two new buildings on a parking lot, so...
For more classrooms.
For more classrooms with the increase going to the third class.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, so, are we talking about deferring $70,000 for carpet, or are we gonna defer the other items as well?
I, I think defer the whole thing and just wait a couple more weeks to see which parts we can work together, and also to get feedback on the overtime, too. For those two reasons.
And I'm assuming that if we go to the state, I mean, we obviously don't know what, what will happen, but, but I'm assuming they'll have some reasonable expectation that we're gonna come in with some funding as well. So, I, I doubt we're gonna completely get away from, from some role in this, but $70,000, I mean, in the grand scheme, is fairly minor relative to waiting 10 months to see if we can get some money. So, I'm just, I, I mean, we can give it three weeks to have some more conversations, but, but I think if the plan is to, to wait until summer to, to see if the legislature has acted, that might be waiting quite a while, so.
And didn't you say that the reason was, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Didn't you say that the reason was that this is a regional facility, it's not just about Spokane, and that's why it's liable, they're liable to get a lot more support than just our local legislators?
And the state's already paying for most of the officers out there getting the training, so looking at that. We also learned that we had been giving the state free use of that space for a long time, so it might be time for them to pay, pay it back for us, hopefully.
And Councilmember Cathcart, I hear you. Definitely, as a female, I looked at the carpet and the bathroom, and yes, that does need some upgrades out there and some of the other things on here, so I'm hoping three weeks will not defer or be a barrier to us going forward as we get more information. So, that's all the request.
And I'm also really hoping, you know, we've asked now a couple times for the overtime hours, and we haven't, we've got, we've heard that, or, excuse me, I say, keep saying overtime hours, but it's not just overtime hours. We're waiting for a report to whether we can get reimbursed for our street time hours, so, so that we can use that for all the training that we've done and then want to do from what we heard today. So, we haven't quite got that, so that's part of, for me, it's like, okay, we really do want to get that, those answers, because our overtime budget is in, in a hole, and this could help that.
Is that any way that we could be reimbursed for that instead? Because I think what Councilman Cathcart said is that, I mean, if we're waiting for the state legislature, I mean, it is, I mean, realistically, a year before that actually happens, so.
Yeah, but the thing is, if we, the money for the training, we can use from this grant fund, but we can't use state, other state money for that. So, if we, if we spend it on these things, we, we might be able to get these things funded by another pot of money and then spend it on that. If we, if we just go ahead and spend it that, we won't be able to get the training reimbursement for another. So, that's, we're just trying to clarify that, because it may be that there's language that we can't, but we're not sure yet, so. But hopefully soon. Okay? All those in favor of deferring till August 22nd?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
That's six to, well, any abstentions? Okay, that's six to one, so it's deferred to the 22nd. And then, that brings us to the ARPA SBO. As we've mentioned, there's the opportunity to amend that. There's, I believe, two packages of amendments out there, essentially. Did I, I just want to make sure I didn't miss one. I didn't miss one from you, Councilmember Bingle.
I didn't send one.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure. So, Councilmember Cathcart sent his in first, and I guess technically you should make your motion, and then see if there's a second, which I'm sure there will be, but...
So, I, I, I made quite a few changes, and I wrapped most of them into one amendment, and then a, a separate amendment has just one very small tweak to it. So, I'll start with that one, the First Amendment, just simply specifying that the not-for-profit entities that we would be funding are 501(c)(3), and I just want to make sure that we're distinguishing between a (c)(3) and a (c)(4), and that we're funding service organizations and not necessarily advocacy organizations, and so that was the intent behind that clarification.
So, that's a motion? Or a second?
Okay. I guess with this one, I haven't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I question, if we're looking at potentially small nonprofits that don't have 501(c)(3) status but aren't doing advocacy, they could be excluded from that? Is that, I mean, is there potential with that?
I would, I would hope they've at least filed for their 501(c)(3). I mean, if they're following the rules, I would think they've applied. They may not have gotten the, the certification back, but, but I think they would, as long as they've applied for it, I think they would still be, in my mind, they'd be in compliance with this request.
Okay. I was just gonna mention, so, you can be a nonprofit corporation agency in, in Washington without being a 501(c)(3), so it's not that it's going to private, so you have to do more to get the federal 501(c)(3), and it does tend to be larger, more sophisticated ones, but, so, but I, I heard your, your concern was that it would go to political, an actual political advocacy.
Not, not political per se, but, but more of an advocacy focus than a service focused is really just my, my concern.
Because 501(c)(3)'s can do advocacy, too, it's just that there's a
Limited.
limit of 20% or something like that, but...
Yeah.
Can't we just say that in here? Not, not to be used for political advocacy, or, I mean...
I'm, I'm fine being that, that specific.
Yeah, it, well, I'm just thinking it would probably be more appropriate in the RFP eligibility thing as opposed to the allocation for it, so we could bring it...
Yeah, I, I agree, and that's where I would put it, it's just we don't have a chance to inform those RFPs.
No, they come back to us before they go out. They will come back to us. The eligibility will come back to us.
Okay.
This is just setting aside the money for it.
Okay.
And I would, again, for that, okay, I'll, and we have Eric Robison on the phone, but I do want to finish the little
Right.
vote on this amendment, and then we'll move to Eric Robison. Any other conversation about this?
Just clarify again exactly what you're...
So, so the intent is that, that we would be funding specifically service organizations rather than, than advocacy, and I think
Yeah.
there's obviously two different roles that nonprofits can play, and I think the emphasis should be on the service.
And as a city entity, I'm not aware that we've funded a (c)(4), so they've all been 501(c)(3)'s, is to my knowledge, and again, that would be in the RFP, and, and that was certainly the intention, Councilmember Cathcart, is to the service part of it, not to the advocacy or a little bit further over going forward. So, it's just a fine distinction.
I'm gonna be opposing it, not because I oppose your, what you do, but it's just that there's a lot of smaller nonprofits that are doing service that don't have a 501(c)(3), and we're, when we put the parameters on this so far, we were focusing it more on the smaller ones. So, that's, so I'd like to, rather than put it in the allocation, I would rather do it in that next thing, and then bring it back to council and then see what people think, so that's me. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's fair. You know, when we talk about small business recovery and things like that, I've been racking my brain on, on a number of things where I think a lot of small businesses that maybe were started by employees whose business was shut down, or by new business owners whose businesses have been shut down, I think we can miss some in our language. I would be totally on board with what you're saying, so long as we can ensure that the RFPs come back to us, because I know that some have, some haven't, and I know that we've improved the process. I just want to make sure that, that RFP is coming back before we send it all out.
And, and if that's the commitment, I'll withdraw the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is my commitment.
Okay.
It's certainly my commitment, also, Councilmember Cathcart.
That's my commitment.
So, that's, that's withdrawn, and now, let's, let's turn to Mr. Robison. There he is. Hello, Eric.
Hi.
Welcome. Thanks for applying for our CHHS Board. I've known you a little bit, but why don't you introduce yourself and explain to us what your current job is and why you're interested in being on our CHHS Board?
Yeah, great. First of all, thank you for having me. I'm excited for the opportunity. So, I grew up in Spokane, Washington. I went to Lewis and Clark High School, live in west-central neighborhood, a few blocks from my parents, and have family still in Spokane area. I've worked in the nonprofit sector in one form or another for my entire working career. Since I, I did a, I lived in other places for about 10 years, worked in other places, did graduate school in Washington DC, but after that, moved back to the city of Spokane, where I've done a variety of things. I worked with the Dishman Hills Conservancy as their executive director briefly, worked for Catholic Charities managing their furniture bank, and then more recently, before my current role, I was with Goodwill Industries managing their Housing and Essential Needs Program, their HEN program, which is a housing program for individuals who live with disabilities, who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And starting at the beginning of this year, I transferred over and began working with the City of Spokane Valley as their Housing and Homeless Coordinator. So, I've been doing that since January. So, having grown up in Spokane, working in nonprofit sector and around issues of homelessness for many years, and now really focused on that with the City of Spokane Valley, when I saw this position come up... I saw this position come up, I thought it'd be a good opportunity, not only because I'm interested in the work and have some experience in the area, but also because I thought, as, since I'm working for the city of Spokane Valley, it might be beneficial to kind of help bridge some of the communication and coordination gap that exists between our two municipalities. I would also add that, in addition to my paid employment, I've been a volunteer board member for East Central Community Organization, or ECHO, for seven, eight years. Now, ECHO recently was dissolved, they joined Take Up The Cause, Chauncey Jones's organization, and they've taken over our housing portfolio. But with ECHO, I helped to manage a portfolio of 33 affordable housing units in the East Central neighborhood, a number of those senior housing units, the historic Rose Apartments that were moved, that was another piece of our portfolio as well. So in that role, I've had a chance to learn a little bit about affordable housing, the kinds of challenges and barriers that come with trying to develop affordable housing in our neighborhoods, and just see the need for affordable housing in our neighborhoods. So that is experience I bring as well that made me interested in this position. So when I saw it come up, I thought it'd be a good fit for my interests and my experience, and also just to help me learn more and keep growing, so that's why I ended up applying.
Excellent. Well, you already answered Councilmember Stratton's question. What high school did you go to?
No, where you went to high school.
Yeah.
I just think you've got the, you're like the whole package. You've got a lot of that experience, it's going to be good on the CHHS Board. The only thing I'm worried about, you're not driving right now, are you?
I'm in the passenger seat.
Okay, okay. No, I don't have any questions. I think you'd be a really good addition, and I appreciate you taking your time to interview.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, well, you don't have to come back for when we vote on it, it's pretty routine, but we'll certainly let you know once we have, and thank you in advance for your service and all that you bring, it's really been a pleasure working with you since you've been at City of Spokane Valley on these issues, and we look forward to more. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we're back to ARPA, and you have a Second Amendment, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so as I went through the list, I tried to include a few items that were, I felt, priorities for my district, for myself, for the city, and I also was just trying to look at, is there some areas where we could maybe pare back just a little bit and try to preserve a little bit of funding for the next tranche, or for reserves, or what have you? I don't mean official reserves, but just to keep in our back pocket. And so the items I added specifically, half a million dollars to Northeast Community Center for the express purpose of establishing a community behavioral health clinic on the center's campus, 500,000 to the MLK Junior Community Center at East Central for HVAC repair replacement, and then those, of course, would be paired with the 1.5 that we had already agreed to allocate. I did include the 3.1 for police vehicles. And then the reductions, I reduced 5 million to 4 million for both the non-for-profit as well as the small business. My thinking is, it's easier to add money later than it is to take it away, and especially given just how tight it is. I was just trying to look for some reasonable opportunities to pare this back and just give us some time to think about if we do need to add some more later. And then also business, business district support from 2.5 to 2.25. So those are the main changes that I proposed. Oh, and then the other savings was the 5 million for, that I removed for the Municipal Justice Center. And so ultimately, this comes in at about 2.2 million below the original proposed, as well as includes these additional priorities of mine. And so I'm making the motion for this amendment.
And that's all one amendment?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, I second that amendment.
Good.
Can I?
Yep, yes.
I didn't hear anything about the NEPDA on there, did you add?
Oh, yes, and, I'm sorry, 900,000, my original request was a million, I pared it back as well, 900,000 if, on the condition that it would be matched one-to-one by Spokane County. So we wouldn't fund it if they didn't agree to also fund it.
Other commentary?
Yes.
I can't support this. The Municipal Justice Center is really important to us. Right now, the judges, the defenders, the prosecutors, staff are working in unsafe and dangerous conditions, and this is a funding source that we have available, it's one-time money, and I'm going to go to the mat for that one, so no, I can't support this.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. I cannot support the decrease in assistance for small businesses and nonprofits. That is direct community support. We have not gotten as much out to those communities, and we know they have been asking for it, and this is our commitment to help those communities that were really doing the heavy lift during COVID, and took a big hit, and did not have access to some of the other resources that were out there, so those two, I cannot support at this time.
Councilmember Ringel?
I hear what you're saying. I, too, am thrilled that we're getting money out to the, to the community to help. One of the reasons why I support Councilmember Cathcart's amendment is because we are removing the Municipal Justice Center, and I don't disagree that that might not be a great location, the furniture coming with it seems to be a great, you know, addition, I mean, it seems to be a really great place. But it's, the reason why the Municipal Justice Center, for me, is such a problem, and why I think that one has to come out, is because, I mean, we're being really tough on the administration for citing essential facilities, and we're essentially doing no community outreach, we're just moving forward because it's a great deal and it has to happen.
It has a 45-day window where we can withdraw, so that is not true.
But?
And that is when you do your outreach.
Right, but we did six months of outreach on the police in the East Central Library, and we're saying that that wasn't enough and that we didn't do enough, and so.
It's not the amount of time, it's what you do.
Okay, I, and?
Okay, let's, yeah, I actually enjoy the conversation back and forth.
Yeah, I don't mind, yeah, I don't mind.
No, 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 so, yeah, so we'll just try to go in order and get recognized, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Continue on, Councilmember Ringel.
Yeah, I thought it was totally fine, I appreciated it.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, I, even though it might be a great deal and we might need to move quickly, I'm just thinking that if we're expecting all city facilities to be, to be cited in this way, I find this to be inconsistent with some of the things that we're saying, and so for me, I can't support the Municipal Justice Center, and in this, in this tranche of money that's going out, I mean, this is basically all community support that's going out, and we're talking about 5 million to support children in the community, 4 million, or, excuse me, Councilman Cathcart's amendment, 4 million, 4 million, you know, an extra 2.5 million to community centers. I feel like that money is still getting out to the, to the groups that need it, and so while it is a decrease in a million of each of those, I think that's still a good amount of money going out into the community. And one of the things that, that we're not really talking about enough is, the city needs to be, the city needs to be whole, we're not whole. And, I mean, the administration made a request of over $40 million after we approved this tranche of money right here, there's going to be like $12 million left, and so, I mean, we have police and fire overtime, that's going to be a big deal, we've got utilities, I mean, nothing that hasn't been said already, and so for me, all of these things might be noble causes, and we can still be in a position where we could have been generous to a fault, and the city's going to be in a, in a big, a big situation financially, and so that's why I support Councilmember Cathcart's amendment, because I think police vehicles do really need to be coming out of ARPA and not from unappropriated reserves, and I know that many on the council, or all of us, understand how dangerous that will be to be pulling money from the, from the reserves.
Can I say one little?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to clarify one little thing on the essential facilities. So the essential facilities ordinance that we're still debating?
Right.
It does not include courthouses as an essential facility, so this, this wouldn't be in opposition to that. Now, you might say you want to amend the essential facilities to add it to that, but I just want to be clear that it is not writ large every facility, the actual facilities at issue are defined in it, so I just want to make that little clarification. But Councilmember Wilkerson?
Also, I just want to really bring forward that, the $900,000 for the Northeast PDA. There are other PDAs in the city, we have not allocated money to them, and so I would not be in support, if we're not going to do it for all of them, I'm not just going to single out the Northeast PDA.
Is that your hand, Councilmember Sapon?
Yeah, I was going to echo that. These amendments honestly seem to be strongly favoring your district, and this package as a whole was spread out to be equitable across the districts unfair. When I look at this, it's leaving out the West Central Community Center and allocating an additional 500,000 to Northeast and MLK, which I don't think is fair. It adds it only to the Northeast PDA, which I don't think is also fair to other PDAs. I think we've been very intentional, like, when we look at neighborhood business districts, we didn't put forward one that said only the Garland Business District, but we said all business districts, so that's one reason I won't be supporting this. And then another reason, again, the police vehicles, we have another identified source of funding, again, debatable, but I think we have one that's identified, and I do commend you, though, on reducing it and making it balanced, so I appreciated seeing that in there, because otherwise I would ask, like, what would you reduce? So I appreciate it, but being a holistic amendment.
I also appreciate bringing forward the amendment and really saying, okay, we're going through this process, but there's an opportunity to debate specific things regardless of how they were pitched and contextualized, so I really appreciate your bringing forward, I think this is a healthy conversation. I did want to, you know, we're limited how many council members can meet at a time, but our budget work group, we had a good meeting with CFO Tanya Wallace last week, even though she was quite ill, and I was, she really went above and beyond the call of duty, but I thought it was very helpful, because she really laid out all the challenges, but all the opportunities, different funds that have specialty funds, and I was, I was the most encouraged than I've been in a long time about our budget situation, not that it's rosy, but that we're finally getting the information that we can make global decisions from a high elevation, and I know Matt Boston from our office was encouraged, so we're looking forward to doing that. But one of the things that she said is that whether the police vehicles are in the ARPA, or you use the overtime in the ARPA, or you use labor contracts, or what, it's all revenue replacement, so it doesn't really matter too much, and my hope in not having police vehicles in the ARPA right now is that it kind of, doesn't, our discussion about giving authorization for vehicles doesn't get caught in that fight, that's why I like the more generalized SBO, but we can do other things that will help the general fund unallocated reserves with ARPA later. I am going to oppose this. I offered another one, which there'll be a motion hopefully for that, even though I can't make the motion for it, but that deals with the community centers, I thought that was a good conversation last week, when we found out that there was a little confusion that Northeast Community Center thought we were giving them an extra 500,000 on top of the Northeast that, and also I did, I don't think I shared this with the whole group recently, but I did talk with Representative Richelli and, about MLK Center at East Central, and he said he would definitely support the money for the HVAC, assuming we give them 500,000 for the HVAC, and then also other things, just like the police training facility, he says, you know, bring us, bring us some things, and he was supportive of that. So as you might imagine, since I drafted a different amendment, I support that one instead of this one, it's a little narrower, I echo some of the comments of other people, but I appreciate the conversation on it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Councilmember Strat?
So on the HVAC repair for the Martin Luther King Center, are they on a, is there a timeline there? Is it the sooner the better? Are they trying to just get it?
It's broken, I mean, it doesn't work well now, so.
So they'd wait longer on your end?
Well, no, not necessarily, because they can't get anyone to, they don't have anyone ready to go on it, so that's, I don't.
I mean, the issue is urgent, I don't know that it can be urgently solved.
Addressed, right.
But it would go a long way for the legislature if we put the money, said we've committed the money, just like we did on the Northeast. In the Northeast, it was, you know, only like a few days before they voted on it, this will say, look, this money is there, can match it.
Okay.
And, and again, on that issue, I mean, places like WIC are considering pulling out of that building because they, it's miserable in that building, and so if we lost WIC in a place as a tenant, we know financially what that does for it, but also just for the community to lose a place where they can go in and have access to that resource would be, would be a big deal, and so, again, I know that nobody up here is opposed to getting that HVAC done, and I really appreciate that, and so if there's another path forward, I'm all about it as quickly as possible, because it is, it is quite urgent.
And I think once we, if we commit the 500,000 to it, and my amendment specifies that that's what it's for, then maybe they'll go get a bid on it right now, because right now there's not a bid
There isn't.
out there, so.
It's over two years old.
Right.
Yeah, it's going to be more.
I agree, yep.
Councilmember Kinnear?
They don't have to lose WIC. We have a library that's sitting right there that they could use temporarily, so there's no way that four officers in the East Central, the East Central Library are going to occupy that entire space. So if, if there were accommodations to be made, that would be the logical thing to do.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ringel?
Sorry, on this, so Councilmember Sapon brought up some good points, it doesn't talk about the West Central Community Center, and we had brought that up in our discussions, and the understanding was that West Central didn't, didn't have any pressing needs as we asked about it, so that's why it wasn't added into it, not that we were excluding anybody, but we asked, and there was nothing that was referenced there when it comes to the community center. Same sort of thing when it comes to, you know, the other PDAs not, not receiving funding. If you look at, you know, we're looking at our targeted investment area, all of District 1 is in this targeted investment area, not all of District 3, not all of District 2 is in it, and it's because we recognize that investment needs to happen in that area, and so it's not necessarily that it's unfair, you know, to the other districts, as we're talking about investments into, you know, areas that need big investments. Our entire district was approved in this strategic, and so it's not necessarily that it's, it's unfair, it's just recognizing investment that needs to happen in certain areas.
Councilmember Cathcart?
And, yeah, and I guess to close probably, just a couple of things, and thanks for mentioning that, yeah, West Central was certainly on my mind, but didn't have anything specific that they had requested to allocate, so I didn't include that, but certainly not, not opposed to supporting the West Central Community Center.
Right.
And then as far as the PDA is concerned, you know, I, my opinion is that the Northeast area there, the PDA, Dogtown, whatever you want to call it, has been historically underfunded, under-resourced by the city, and so I think it does make sense that we would come in from, from sort of an equity perspective and help support that. It's been an official funded PDA, and by funded, I mean, having an exec director since 2019. I think S3, R3, or, you know, the West Plains PDA, I think it's been around since 16 or 17, it's had some additional time to get established, it has some natural benefits considering its location, that really helps, I think, propel it forward. So again, nothing against the U District, which is a unique PDA, or the West Plains PDA, but, but I think that Northeast PDA does need some additional support, and further, we are actually considering an expansion of the PDA further into the county, which to try and absorb some additional development so that we can actually get some resources, because, and this will actually cost the county some additional dollars, just the way the taxes work and the split between the city and county, so it's actually to their detriment a little bit on the tax side that this happens, but to keep the PDA solvent and strong, it is certainly a consideration that we're, we're looking at, so. And then the last thing is, I, I would love to double, triple, quadruple the amount that we're giving to small businesses and not-for-profits and community members, but ultimately, we have a finite amount of money, and my logic is, you know, we can reduce some of this, we're not going to be out of money, we're still going to have, I think, 12 to 13, 14 million in the bank, the idea being that we just have a little bit extra in reserve, we can give it some time, if we need to beef these up, we can do it, if we need to support something else, we've got that flexibility, but once we've allocated the money and it's spent, it's spent. And so my thought was, if we just reduce a little bit now, be thoughtful, we can always add later, but, but that was, that was the consideration that I gave it, so.
Councilmember Stratton and Councilmember Wilkerson?
Okay, just a quick question, so under this PDA, it says that there was, this would be on the condition that it's matched by Spokane County.
Yeah, right.
Have you had, has anybody talked to you from Spokane County? What is the likelihood of that being matched?
I think it's reasonable, I mean, I've sent them a letter, I've had conversations with a couple of the commissioners, I mean, they're, they're supportive of, of supporting the PDA, and I think if we came in and there was an agreement that if they match, we'd match, my belief is that they'll come in and support that. And I proposed this eight months ago, I think, to them, probably last August, so.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
I just have to mention, under equity, for those who don't know, there is a tribal PDA that has not been invested in, that could be anywhere located in the city limits. So if we talk about disinvest- So if we talk about disinvestment, that would be one. Then if we're gonna do that, then I would say let's put $900,000 towards a tribal PDA as well.
All right. Any other, yes?
Sorry, tribal PDA or tribal community center?
Uh-uh.
Nope.
PDA.
Okay, okay.
How does that, we'll, we'll talk off.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there is one. They're, they're set up, they're ready to.
They were up until about?
A couple of years ago, but we were, they were looking at reactivating when all the ARPA funds came down to, to invest in their communities, but their PDA is citywide. They could be anywhere, so food for thought.
Yeah, I guess I hadn't heard that expressed before.
Well, every day we learn more.
That's right.
So, okay, any other discussion about the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of Amendment 2, as proposed by Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
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 Which ones? I'm confused now, where am I at? Amendment 2, okay.
You see the email?
Yeah, I've got it right here. I just wanted to know where we're at with it. So that's all of these, right?
Yeah, it's one.
And the difference was the cooling center?
No.
No, no, no. So this is Councilmember Cathcart's.
Oh, okay, Cathcart, okay, okay. Thank you.
You might be voting on the wrong one.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Wilkerson, you just told.
No, no, I, I thought we moved on. No, no.
I thought we had some rhetorical argument that slater vote. I was so excited.
Let's take that vote again.
All right.
We'll hold you to it.
All right.
Can we do that again?
So this is Councilmember Cathcart's Amendment 2, as all those items that we listed. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right. Amendment fails 2 to 5.
I almost got it. Councilman Stratton.
Two to one years now.
There's four.
So I circulated another amendment that did two things. It was more specific on the language on community centers, and then secondly, it added 120,000 for extreme weather events, because I understand from the administration that we've exhausted our, our monies on that, and there's money needed to pay the extra library staff, and then there's some, some requests to reimburse Empire Health Foundation going forward for a cooling tent out near Thor, so, but it's, the allocation doesn't specify that, it just specifies for extreme weather events.
Yeah, just for, I guess clarification, is you're thinking that this would be something that we would draw from just over the course of the next couple of months, the next year? Okay, so just a short term?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you could make that as a motion.
Yes, I will make that motion. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that amendment?
Not necessarily about this particular one, but on this idea. I talked to several council members about potentially asking the schools to open up their vacant gyms while we're in this situation. I mean, we all understand how dangerous it is for people who are homeless, and so finding a way that we could find more sites, because I know that, you know, many up here want people to be able to stay in their neighborhoods and not have to go to a particular area, and the schools have dozens of buildings in the area, some of them vacant in the summertime as it's summer break. As I understand, high schools, obviously, there, there are sports needs and things like that, but I think there could be a number of, of schools, elementary schools that, that could be available for this purpose.
And I agree with you, and last year, I did talk them into it, because they've got programs going for kids, and what they did last year is they opened them up for the families in that neighborhood. So I haven't been involved in it this year, but I'm just, I'm just affirming that idea, that concept, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, not, not just homeless, but, but those who maybe just don't have access to cool homes or apartments.
Yeah, no, I was really, I was imagining after last year that that's what the plan, and churches as well, churches are cooling there, and a neighborhood based, exactly, so that if you happen to be a house in a neighborhood that doesn't have air conditioning, you can just go there. So totally agree with you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
I, I was just wondering, have we heard an update from the administration when the Trent Shelter could potentially open? Do we know anything? Councilmember Wilkerson and I stopped by there today, and it's definitely not ready.
I see, oh, you have one? I see Mr. Hall in the audience, and he might know more.
I, I can tell you what I know. I talked to Johnny Perkins Thursday for an hour, and he said that the middle of August, he's aiming for the middle of August because the insulation's still, you're shaking your head now. That's what he told me, that's what I'm, just repeating what I've been told. He did say the middle of August. I thought that would be ambitious. And Mr. Hall, please.
Yes, that is accurate. Council President Biggs, City Council Members and Neighbors, I'm John Hall, Director of Neighborhoods Housing and Human Services. On the question of the status of the Trent Shelter, where we were at the end of last week is that the certificate of occupancy, which is the milestone to drive when we can actually hand over the site from the contractor to the tenant, will most likely occur later this month, probably the third to the fourth week of August. So we were preparing to actually take possession, the, the tenant, probably somewhere around September 1st. What happened earlier today is that we issued a request for proposals for the service provider, and so there's gonna be some slippage in the timeline before it comes to committee. August 15th, the Finance Committee, we will bring the operator so that we can keep that process moving, so that when the certificate of occupancy is issued, we can step right into the facility, and then the service provider will most likely come online in September as well. But that's the latest status update.
Well, first of all, welcome, Mr. Hall, to the City Council. Glad you're here. We got to meet the foreman, is that what we call him?
Mike.
On site down there, who actually came to Spokane from Arizona to work on this project. I say yay, and I asked him about the heating cooling in that building, and that's an aspirational goal, I think, the middle of September. I'm not a contractor, but wow, there is a huge challenge ahead to get that up and running as quickly as possible.
I would just add that we found out there's only about four people working on it right now, and I think it's important to express frustration about that, that when we approved the lease back in June, we were told it'd be operational today, August 1st. And this is the first time we've had an update about that, and there's a crisis right now, or the extreme heat, and seeing that we don't have an alternative and not working towards having an alternative is pretty frustrating.
But just to be clear, we recognize you weren't yours. It's not about you, you're the messenger, so that's.
I get it, and I, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I know that we have been working interdepartmentally with buildings and permits, and they have been to the site and have inspected, and I've had meetings with them last week, as well as with Mr. Perkins. I had a request this morning, we're, we're trying to coordinate a meeting with, with buildings as well for the latest update, so we will get that to you as soon as I have the latest.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Hall, for all that. I will say, I mean, the city, it's, it's not that the city is doing nothing. I think that that's a stretch to say that. I mean, capacity for 1,800 individuals at libraries around the city is a big deal, and so it's not that nothing is happening and the administration is doing nothing. And so to say we're not moving quick enough on the Trent Shelter, totally fair, but to say we're not doing anything, I think, is a bit misleading.
Well, I think part of the issue, though, is getting people there. I think that's part of the big, big challenge, is how do we get somebody in Northwest Boulevard Safeway Parking Lot to a library if they're, if they can't walk, or if it's too hot? How do we do that? So that's my concern.
Sure. Yeah, we're continuing, we're going a little field with the thing, but continue on the conversation. Yes, go ahead.
I, I guess I would say in the same way that we're offering bus passes to others. I mean, I think that there, there are ways for us to give transportation to those who need it to get to a site, because what, what we are doing by not doing this is we're concentrating it in, in one neighborhood, and this becomes a, a real problem for that neighborhood, a real burden that they shouldn't have to carry alone, and that's why I like the idea of libraries around the city and schools around the city, because then we, as a city, are carrying this burden and not just that group, because if you go to a neighborhood council meeting there, if you listen to the businesses and the residents and the neighbors there, what they're, what they're enduring, you know, is, 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 is more than they should be enduring.
Right.
It's not fair.
No, it's not fair.
Correct.
Other?
I was just gonna comment, I, we know the city's doing something. I, just personally, my frustration is, the administration had come to us several times with these new timelines, and it just keeps getting kicked down the road again and again, from the urgency of us doing the zoning, to the urgency of us signing the lease, and then on the 15th, it'll be the urgency of us approving the shelter provider, and then it will be the urgency of us to, to approve the social side of that. So it, it's, it's just been frustrating that council, I think, has stepped up and done its part, and then it's on the administration, but still, we get the heat that it's not done. So not on you, Mr. Hall. Thank you, thank you for coming, right? You know, I'm not gonna say you're on a white horse or anything, but we are just glad that you're here, because we know that department needs some leadership to move some of these things forward, so I appreciate it.
Councilmember Bingle.
And again, to be fair on the urgency thing, we keep yelling at the administration, telling them how urgent it is, and so then they come to us and say, yes, it's urgent, and then we say, why didn't you bring this to us earlier? And then we yell at them, saying it's urgent. And so the urgency, I, I totally understand, and we haven't been blameless in all of this. We have, you know, slowed the process down when it comes to a lease, when it comes to the zoning, when it comes to a provider. We ourselves are, are culpable in this as well, and so if there's blame to be had, I feel like it's a burden that we both share, and so I don't think it's fair to put it on one or the other. I think that burden should be shared by who is slowing the process down. At times, I think it's been both, and so I don't, I don't think it's fair to place it all on one, on one side.
I'm not gonna debate Councilmember Bingle tonight, because it's inappropriate, but I have to say, they've had this service provider lined up that's presumed to be the service provider. We could have voted on that, and we could have had that behind us and moved on to the service. So in this, in the discussion for me, thank you, Council President.
We're not debating.
All right, well, let's turn our attention back to the ARPA proposed amendment.
Oh, right.
Oh, no, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, could, could you clarify the, your amendment regarding the community centers? I'm, I'm trying to find the, the language, and I just, I can't find it.
Yeah, it just, it said, it specifies that the $500,000 for Northeast is for the, towards the renovation of the former Northeast Library.
Okay.
And that the $500,000 for MLK is towards the HVAC.
Okay.
And that the West Central Community Center is towards a capital improvement mutually agreed upon between the city and the center. We don't, they're still being creative on moving their money around of how they wanna spend the money. We don't have a, a large ask yet, but, but the idea is to.
They can, they can do something.
They can do something with it, but we did, remember, last time, people said, well, we don't wanna just say, hey, just spend it however you want. They, we want them, since we're the owners of the building, to make sure that we're investing in the building, so.
Okay.
So, just meant to clarify that. We did, just so you know, we did debate at the ARPA Committee whether or not to throw in another $1.5 million and give them each another $500,000, and sort of, to your point, Councilmember Cathcart, we're like, ooh, we're getting down to the end, and so we kinda held back from that, so. All right, any other discussion on the amendment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Council, any abstentions? Councilmember Cathcart, I didn't get your vote.
Nay.
Nay, okay, so, it passes 5 to 2. All right. So there was one other issue that we circulated, but I don't know that it's ready to do anything at this point yet, because I'm hearing back from City Legal, and that has to do with, you might remember that the Fire Marshal requested that there be consent from someone authorized for the property where the cooling tent is, out on Thor. I think it's, the actual address is on Ralph Street, and we just, I don't, I don't have enough, I just got my discussion from City Legal walking up onto the dais here today, and so it's a little unclear, so I don't really have anything to do, but we may revisit it at 6 o'clock, and we're trying to do some phone calls and talk to people about it. But essentially, it would, if it was to go forward, we're trying to figure out, is Empire Health Foundation going to lease from WashDOT for the next six weeks, or is the city, or is no one, essentially? Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, to me, the, the simplest thing here is if WashDOT just says, yes, we'd allow the, the cooling center and take responsibility. Do we, have there been those conversations? I mean, that would, that would solve literally everything.
Yeah, so my understanding from talking to them is that their lawyers are saying they need some kind of formal agreement with whoever's doing it to do it, including an indemnification clause, that otherwise they're putting the state at risk. Right now, their official position is they're not approving it, but due to human, human suffering and things like that, they're not doing anything to discourage it. That's their thing, and questions about Boise v. Martin issues in there. So they're hoping that either Empire Health Foundation or the city would step up, sign that kind of hold harmless agreement, and then they would, their lawyers would be fine. So that's the rock and the hard place that the on-the-ground people at WashDOT here are facing.
And then, oh, so if, so is your proposal that we, that we ask the mayor to permit something that, with Empire Health Foundation? Is that, so we would be?
Well, if Empire Health, the easiest thing from my perspective is if Empire Health Foundation enters into a lease with WashDOT, and we don't have to do anything, then our Fire Marshal can say, all right, there's consent, and I can finish my inspection and approve it. That'd be the easiest. But if Empire Health isn't able or willing to, then the question is, well, we could, as a city, lease the space and then turn it over to them, so. But you have something to say.
Yes, we should add the resolution so that people can sign up for testimony, even if it gets changed or substituted at 6:00.
I just don't, I don't, well, anyone could, anyone can make the motion to add it, so. I can't make the motion anyway.
Oh, okay, I'll make the motion to add it.
Okay.
And this is just to add it to the agenda?
Right.
For purpose of discussion.
Yeah, so moved, or second.
Before, Mr. Pickle, lean into the mic.
Well, we're all dealing with this in the past about 40 minutes. That's all we, all the time we've had to review any of this. So if you do the resolution, I think you also have to do the contract, because the resolution calls for you giving the council president authority to sign the contract if the mayor does not. And the public's going to say, well, what contracts are you authorizing him to sign where these approved outside of the council meeting? Therefore, there's an OPMA violation. So you need to have the contracts on the council agenda, so the public can know which contracts you are approving. My recommendation would be you include those contracts, approve those contracts, whatever that language is, approve those contracts with the resolution, so the resolution is going to say, we've approved these contracts. If the mayor does not sign off on them, then we authorize the council president to sign them pursuant to the city charter. And that's setting aside all the discussion about the contract language. And just listening to the discussion right now, my, my initial question is, well, who is running the cooling center? It's not the city right now, and it's not Empire Health, and it's not DOT, so DOT is looking for that entity that is operating the cooling center, and they're, they're the ones who should be signing the contract, not the city. And that's my review of 40 minutes ago, so.
So what's to, what's to stop? Who right now can say, we want that taken down? The, the tent, the cooling, all of it? We want it dismantled and taken down?
Well, ultimately, right now would be the Fire, the Fire Marshal. Ultimately, right now, it'd be the Fire, the Fire Marshal. If it's a fire code violation, Fire Marshal would be taking that action.
But we don't have anything in place to stop that. I'm worried about just people being in danger. So if, if we don't have anything, then the Fire Marshal could say, it's going down. And then we're left with...
If we, if I, if we have, if we entered into a lease with WashDOT, we could give permission for the tent to operate, and then the Fire Marshal could process it. I think that's the, that's the, right now, there is no permission.
That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah. Two questions. So what would be, in your mind, are there any unintended consequences of the city entering into a lease with WashDOT outside of the cooling, being able to stand up the Cooling Center? Is there anything that, are we vulnerable to other liabilities or other issues? Or, I'm just kind of curious, is there...
Well, again, we have not had a chance to review these contracts, so I cannot say. But certainly, there is a significant amount of liability, insurance provision, indemnification, holding DOT harmless. And if we're stepping into, assume all those liabilities, we need to make sure that, that language reads as best as we can have it with DOT pushback because they're going to insist on certain mandatory language.
So, Mr. Piccolo?
I, Councilmember Kinnear first, and then...
And do we even have that language? So do we, or do we have time to craft that language before 6:00? It's now 4:39. And we all heard Chief Schaefer tell us that there's going to be 30 mile an hour winds. So he has concerns about the tent in those winds. He also has concerns about fires on site. So he outlined a number of concerns. So this is the perfect conundrum.
Councilmember Bingle, and then Wilkerson, and then Cathcart.
I guess my question is more along the lines of how this fits in with the charter. Can we negotiate leases on behalf of the city and, as opposed to the mayor and the administration negotiating those leases?
Well, my impression is that the charter provides for the mayor to recommend contracts to the city council. So the mayor's office has no chance to see these documents and negotiate that with the other party. That makes it pretty difficult for the mayor's office to recommend contracts to the city council. So as the administrator of the executive branch, my expectation would be that the mayor's office would be, would take the lead on all contract negotiations, for the most part, and bring in those that need council approval back to the council for, for your approval. The charter does provide that the mayor and the council president can execute contracts. And the practice has been, the contracts would be delivered to the mayor's office for execution. And I can only think of maybe a couple occasions where the council president, not this council president, but council presidents in the past have signed contracts when the mayor would not sign. Setting aside your own internal city council contracts for operation of the department.
And I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing. City Administrator Perkins, when we met with him last week, he said they were going to talk with Grabner and do that. I did not negotiate this. I simply, the copy was sent to me, I simply sent it to City Legal. Now, as it turns out, the two lawyers I sent it to were not in the, I sent it to Lyndon Smithson and James Richmond. And I think then later, maybe Hannah Lee sent it to you or something. But they were, they did not review. So it's been around longer than 40 minutes, but not, not reviewed by Mr. Piccolo. So, so there was no negotiation between council and WashDOT. It was just facilitating the communication between the administration and them.
So the administration negotiated these leases?
No. They've had ongoing negotiations, is my understanding. I don't, I mean, I wasn't there, so.
Who did provide these leases?
WashDOT sent it to me.
Okay.
And I sent it to the administration.
Gotcha. So WashDOT was negotiating with one of these providers or just decided to create this on their own and then sent it to us?
Well, they, I think they are talking with Empire Health Foundation. So there's, they included that one as an example. But the one, I don't know the conversations between the administration and WashDOT, other than they weren't getting to an agreement. And so I said, all right, send it to me, I will send it to them. So. Okay. I think Councilmember Wilkerson was next, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Well, I was just going to follow up on the question from Councilmember Cathcart. Unintended consequences or liability? If we don't provide something, even though they are on WashDOT land, are we not in the same, I mean, we're between damn if you do and damn if you don't. That's kind of my feeling right now. And then second, if the city signs the lease for the land, then would we have to do a contract with Jules Helping Hands?
I would anticipate a subsequent lease, since we are now, we have possession of the land, we would have a contract with the provider for whatever services we're looking for. With any, with any, well, if I, with any type of property, we would look for a contract with that provider to come in and provide those services.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. So does this in any way, we were having a conversation around our good neighbor agreements, and the concern from our city attorney was that it was in violation of the public duty doctrine? In other words, that we were providing a very specified service for a very specified location? Does this in any way violate that doctrine? It sounds very similar to what we were trying to accomplish with good neighbor agreements that we were told we couldn't.
And with such short notice, I could not answer that.
Okay. So my other question is, if legally, we're not in a place where we could consider this tonight, especially given, I don't even know what's in these contracts or what's being required, could we, the temp isn't going to reach back up to above 95 until probably Sunday or Monday. Could we not schedule a vote sooner, say Thursday during study session, or in between, even if we had to? But since it is an urgent matter, could we not delay this till the study session to consider it, to give us all more time to be comfortable with what's being proposed?
I think you could schedule a special council meeting for Thursday, as you've done in the past.
Yeah.
Include these specific items. And with any special council meeting, you need to list these items specifically on your agenda, and you can't go beyond what's on that agenda.
Right.
And that's this Thursday, we could do it.
Yeah. As we're gone the next week.
Councilmember Bingle.
How, have we, have we run this by the SB 5853 that the state passed to allow us for, is this an allowable use? Because I've been looking at 5853, and I'm not sure that this is an allowable use based on the state law that they passed. And so I'm just curious if we've run it through that.
That's, that's up to WashDOT to do. That's like, that's not our thing. My understanding is they're charging rent out of this, and they can charge rent for special events, so they were treating it as a special event, not as a long-term lease for housing. It was just a special event of a cooling tent.
And then...
$500 and some dollars a day?
That was a fine.
Yeah.
No, no, no. This was the $800 for six weeks was this.
Okay. You're getting the fines.
Yes. And then we'll go back.
So, in lieu of all the confusion that we have right now, I'd like to withdraw my motion and revisit this at a study, at the study session on Thursday.
Second?
You don't, okay. You don't have to have a second. That's what's wrong. Okay. So we're not going to do that tonight. That helps people knowing if they're testifying or not. I've been discussing a little bit with Empire Health Foundation, trying to, since they're the ones funding it, like, they figured it out. I will call them in our brief time. All right. Yes?
I just had a question. So if we're waiting till Thursday, does that mean that the administration, the city can start fining them starting today? Like they threatened they could? I guess it might be...
The language is may.
May, yeah. They, they may.
Yeah. And I don't want to misspeak, but my interpretation in speaking with Colin is that they're not issuing those fines at present. I can't say about down the road, but at present, they're not planning to issue those fines, is what I was told.
But by not taking action, they, they can't. And they have threatened it already.
There's some dispute from them of whether it was a threat or not, or just a notice. But yes, there's, there's, that vulnerability is there. So. All right. Anything else before we go to our executive session? You're not excited about that, I know. But... All right. We're going to go executive session till 5:15. And we don't expect to do any business after that. And we'll let you know at 5:15 whether we're adjourning or whether we're going to extend. Oh, thank you. It is for labor relations.
All right, this is Council President. We're going to extend the executive session five minutes to 5:20. Thanks.
Thank you.
Am I muted, Jay?
No.
Okay. All right, this is Council President. We finished up our executive session. We will see you at the legislative session at 6:00 PM. We're adjourned.